We call this meeting the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. Ask that you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone that's here this evening, those that are watching at home. I'll go over the agenda for this evening. We have the consent agenda, which this evening consists only of the minutes of the last meeting. We have three public hearings this evening. The first will be the de-annexation requested by Jeff and Carol Jernigan. The second will be a public hearing of vacation requested by Cordell Mason Elementary. And the third is a comprehensive plan map amendment for Friendship Manor. So with that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number One, the consent agenda, the minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll go into the public hearings. Before I do, I'll go briefly over the procedure for a public hearing. I will call for a list of exhibits from the city attorney. A staff will make a presentation. The applicant will make a presentation. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor will be given an opportunity. Anyone that's opposed will be given the opportunity. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for the de-annexation for Jeff and Carol Jernigan. Mr. Holly, or I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits that I would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, if I can get a clarification from Mr. McDonald on a potential conflict of interest on this one.
Aye.
Bob, I think I know the answer on this one, but I want to double check. I have a relative that has a owns property right next door to this one. Though I have no monetary advantages one way or another on this, I just wanted to double check if I have any type of conflict of interest on this one.
I don't think you have any legal conflict of interest. However, if you feel like that would influence you one way or the other, you're certainly able to step down yourself if you choose, but I don't think there's any legal basis for you needing to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Partner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, as Mr. Chairman said, this is a request by Jeff and Carol Jernigan requesting to detach portion of their property at 2405 Southwest 19th Street. They have about 7.31 acres, and the property, as you can see on the overhead, is located on the west side of Southwest 19th Street. It is south of Micassay Drive and north of Stone Creek Drive. I think this best depicts what is being requested. They're requesting to detach 5.68 acres of the 7.31 acre property, and in essence, that particular portion of the property consists of a fairly significant ravine that runs down the center of the northern portion of that larger L-shaped property. The rest of it is pretty steep terrain, fairly heavily wooded. As is shown in the staff report, they did complete all of the requirements for a de-annexation application, submitting the information that was needed, and staff has provided a recommendation, and our recommendation is for denial based on the fact that it isn't really in keeping with the Comprehensive Plan, and that's pointed out in the staff report as well as policy of the city. Having said that, I think it's fair to say, I spoke for a little while with Carol, and we kind of went over the application process and talked about the de-annexation, and I got the impression, and perhaps if they choose to get up and give a presentation or talk with you, I got the impression that they simply wanted to talk about some options. Carol and Jeff obviously are very giving members of the community, and so just kind of want to thank them for the things that they do and let you know that in my discussions with them, I think they're just looking at exploring options and wanted to talk with you some about this particular option. So, as you know, our recommendation is based certainly on the policy and on the Comprehensive Plan. It is certainly also sets a precedent in the city. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Holly? Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation. You need to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give in this matter as a truth or truth unto the truth?
I do.
Will you please state your names and address?
Jeff Jernigan, 2405 Southwest 19th, Blue Springs.
Carol Jernigan. You know how to spell Jernigan? 2405 Southwest 19th Street, Blue Springs. We're up. Well alright. Good evening. Thanks for hearing us this evening, and I see you spelled Jernigan right well on the first sheet up there. We've been living in our home for eight years now. In my, over, my letter I said seven, it's coming up to eight. We've been paying property taxes every year, and they have become burdensome. We're looking for a way to lower the property taxes, if there's any right solution we can come to together. So that's mainly it.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It is about reducing taxes. We've sectioned it off, so the house is on a fairly substantial-sized piece of property. The rest of the property sits kind of in a floodplain where you can't use it really for anything else other than just what it is, barren property. And that's one of the reasons why we were looking for some way to come to an agreement of some sort.
Are there questions for the applicant? Have the taxes been going steadily up? Have you seen a movement in your taxes?
Continually. And we don't mind paying the taxes, it's just, oh my goodness, year after year after year, it's becoming burdensome. We built the house big, on purpose, as a community asset, and it's one of the biggest things we get to share. So I think we've had some good events, and some of you have been over. Anyway, we'd like to continue giving to the city. It's a thrill to be able to, and we just bit off a lot more than we thought we could keep up with, I guess.
Basically, living with some relief there of some sort. We've been a big part of the community. I own a company here in town that employs 50 people. It's a manufacturing company out south of Blue Springs, in Blue Springs, south of the Book of Library.
International.
And, you know, we strive to work with the community and promote the community. In fact, we allow the police department to use our building for their tactical trainings, and, you know, it's just something more we can give back to the community. So it's one of the things that we work on.
I know both of you are very involved in the city and in civic events.
It's fun. We're grateful.
For that, we appreciate.
Thank you. It's a wonderful sense of community. Good.
Mrs. Jernigan, I know in your letter you indicated that you want to decrease the property value or your taxes, but I notice that the portion that will remain inside the city of Blue Springs will be the portion that contains your home.
Yes, sir.
And you probably know that typically why taxes increase is because you have improvements on the land. And so I'm just kind of curious if you had any conversations with the county assessor's office that if this portion was de-annexed, what would the taxes be on that portion versus the taxes that would remain in Blue Springs with your house on it?
That, I don't think I can answer that question.
Haven't asked the question, and wouldn't know who to ask, and just kind of taken a broad brush stroke. Do you have an idea?
Well, just, you know, if you look at how your taxes are typically broken out, the city's portion of your tax bill is a little over 8 percent, 8.4 percent. You know, the majority of it goes to the school district, which there would be no change.
Mr. Holly gave us...
The next highest one would be the Central Jackson County, and then we have the city at 8.4. So I was just kind of curious if there was any research as far as if that was de-annexed and became back to the county, then what the taxes would be? Because I, you know, just from my viewpoint, I'm not sure if there will be a big difference in the property taxes since the house will be on the improved property that's still within the city of Blue Springs.
That's the developed property, like Monopoly.
Yeah. So that's what I was...
Well, we kind of look at this as anything that reduces as a B plus.
I was just kind of curious.
But it's a legitimate question.
It is.
I'd like to know the answer.
And I thought the exact same thing, and with the real estate background I have, it's my understanding that the majority of the taxes that you're paying are paid for the improved residence that you have.
And that, we're fine with. We have no qualms with that whatsoever, never have. What we are questioning is the fact that we have so much of it that's unimproved, and it's on an area that can't be used for anything else, and it does abut the county, so there would be no hole, it would just, it butts up against it.
I couldn't agree more that every little bit helps, and it was just along...
And that's really all we're looking for, is just something that helps a little bit.
That was along my same mindset that I thought you would know more than myself, is that although it would decrease, I would think the amount that it would decrease would be very minimal.
But we would never ask for that on our property because that would affect the school system and everything else, and we're not those type of people.
And separate from that, having been to your house on numerous occasions for fundraisers, regardless of the outcome of this vote, I would just like to publicly thank both of you, because you have been phenomenal stewards of our community.
And we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
It's a thrill.
I know.
I've never felt such a sense of community, and I'm a Johnson County transplant.
Mr. Chair, I do want to ask one question. The property zone agricultural?
I think that would be the de-annexed part would become, once again, agricultural.
Okay. Because as, like Mr. Hennig said, with the same background, your land is actually taxed less, so I...
Have you explored other alternatives for reducing your taxes? Anything else other than this?
We picked on you first.
Okay.
No, I don't know what else. It seemed like a logical place to go.
Yeah.
Just to ask the question, and here we are.
Okay.
We pushed the button, and the machine started, so thanks for the consideration.
Well, while we're at public, you can go to the Jackson County Assessor's Office?
For?
Regarding your taxes, on some of the taxes. For tax reduction.
Really?
Nah, don't make that where everybody goes down there.
School districts are throwing stuff at us, but...
Thank you.
I saw you getting up over there.
We can't control that.
Yes, every two years you have the opportunity to have your home reassessed.
Right.
And unfortunately, that timeframe just passed. Correct me if I'm misspeaking here. And it's every other year.
Alright.
So in the summer or fall of 2011, you should have that opportunity again, and we're all notified by now.
Alright. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Quick question. Sure. When you first developed this land, did you think about doing that at that time, separating the city part from...
We were encouraged to do that, and we thought, nah, incorporate the whole thing, because we were on an, we, I, was on an emotional ascent that it would be wonderful to belong to Blue Springs, all of it. So it was encouraged, one of your relatives said.
We were aware, we were aware that Blue Springs had several holes in it as far as the city, and they were trying to fill them, so we were looking not to be part of that problem. But, you know, times change.
Well, that was comment I was making. Not the first one.
Okay. And thanks for taking good care of the city. It's wonderful that you've all volunteered as a group to take care of our city, so we're in good hands.
Are there other questions or comments? Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, I'll bring it back up here for any comments on the record.
Is there anybody in the audience?
Pardon?
Anybody in the audience?
Anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed to this? Now I'll bring it back up here for any comments on the record.
Just a question for staff.
Yes.
If this is appropriate time. When's the last time a request like this has been made? I understand...
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Hennig, I believe the last time was 2002 or 2003, around that timeframe.
So they're uncommon?
Very much so, yes.
And if I remember, if I'm thinking of the right instance, there were other circumstances as well on that one, where the city had not provided services that they had promised or something along those lines.
I believe your recollection is fairly accurate. It was regarding an undeveloped or a developing piece of property that was not, did not have the access to services as per the pre-annexation agreement.
Close the public hearing. Is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a statement. We all want to decrease our taxes, and I appreciate the fact that this couple is very active in the community and does a lot of good work, but I think that has to be set aside, and we have to look at the facts. We had set policy some time back that we would not have those pockets, that we would not allow people to split their parcels up, that when you brought a piece of property in, you brought it in its entirety, and I think that that's what we have to look at
I'm a little concerned about a precedent that this could establish, too, that others could come forward and request the same thing. Okay? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for denial of the de-annexation, 1009-2388.
Sure, we have a motion, and is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Paul Pepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Sustained.
Abbott?
No.
Hennig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trosen?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye. It has been denied, but I think we have offered some alternatives for you this evening. Again, we appreciate all that you do for our city. Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Of course, that does go on, that's a recommendation, and so that does go on to the City Council.
Okay. That does go to the City Council. Thank you. All right. Open the public hearing, VAC 1009-2368 for Cordell Mason Elementary. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachment. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission.
Again before you this evening is a request by the Blue Springs School District to vacate a previously recorded storm art detention basin at the Cordell Mason Elementary School property. You can see the portion of the property in question there in the overall map. I think this shows more clearly, the dark boundary there is the area in question, the existing storm art detention easement, and then the yellow, more north-south orientation is the proposed storm art detention easement. As you may recall, back in January of this year, the preliminary plat and the site plan design review applications were approved by the planning commission. Property also did receive a variance regarding the prerequisite to building permit regarding final plat, and that was approved in February. Final plat is still required, and as part of that would be the delineation of that new recorded storm art detention easement that you see there in yellow. That final plat, due to the variance, is required prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the expansion of the Cordell Mason Elementary School building. Staff does recommend approval of the vacation. Again, it fits with the site plan as well as, again, their preliminary plat and the process moving forward to the final plat. As noted in the staff report, approved preliminary plat did include a condition, it was condition number 10, which stated that the storm art detention report is subject to review and approval of the city engineer, and necessary permanent detention elements and permanent detention easements shall be provided, subject to review and approval of city engineer. So since that condition is already in place with that preliminary plat, and again, will need to carry over to the final plat, staff is recommending approval of the vacation without any further conditions. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Allen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant, please make your presentation.
We don't have a presentation tonight. It's tied by what the staff needs. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give in this matter as a truth unto the truth?
Yes. John Brown, 220 Northwest Executive Way, Lee Summit, Missouri, 64063. We'll just basically be up here for questions if there are any.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone opposed? Bring it back up here for any comments on the record. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the vacation, 1009-2368.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Paul Pepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hennig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trosen?
Aye.
Billups?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
We'll recommend approval. Okay. Move on to the fourth, I, public, the fourth Agenda Item, Public Hearing, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. Open the public hearing. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again before you this evening is a request by National Church Resonances for the Friendship Manor Senior Housing Property, located at the northeast corner of Summit and 10th Street. The property's just a little over an acre in size, actually does include three separate lots, lots one, two, and three of Bartle's Edition. And the request here is to modify the comprehensive plan map to change it from business park designation to high-density residential. As you see in the staff report and attachments, the request is being made in order to support the applicant's application to Missouri Housing Development Commission for tax credits to assist in rehabilitating the property primarily on the interior. Again, the current designation in the comp plan for Friendship Manor is business park. Obviously, this designation is not consistent with current use of the property. The downtown master plan identifies a property for a multifamily residential use, and the downtown development code designates properties that T4 general urban, which is appropriate for mixed-use and multifamily residential zoning. So with that being the case, it is certainly appropriate, the comprehensive plan, future land use map, be modified as requested to the high-density residential designation. And again, there are letters of support in the project that's being proposed, attached to the staff report, and I'm sure the applicant can answer any more questions regarding the actual tax credit process and the project they're looking to undertake here shortly.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Allen?
All right, thank you.
The applicant, please make her presentation. You need to be sworn in, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you will give in this matter as a truth unto the truth? Please state your name and address.
Benjamin Dassel. 1533 Fairgrounds Road, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301. I really don't have a presentation, I'm just up here to answer any questions.
Okay. Other questions?
I have one question. What type of, what type of high-density housing are you proposing to put in there?
It'd be the same as it is right now, we're just gonna rehab the present building, redo all the apartments, upgrades, parking lot upgrades, entranceway upgrades, common area upgrades, just upgrading the property. Don't quote me on this, but I think the property's roughly 30 some odd years old, and there's not been much improvement done to it prior to our, prior to our purchase.
So do your upgrades consist of...
Uh, let's see. Can I read from a list? Is that okay? Major items to be completed as part of the rehab, new roof, new windows, new HVAC system, reconfiguration of entrances, extensive work to the common areas, and extensive rehab and upgrades to the units. All new cabinets, appliances, flooring, light fixtures, and bath accessories, and landscape exterior upgrades. The exterior will look much better when we're done attached, is the scope of work to be done.
So what is the, what is the property being used for right now?
Senior housing.
Okay, so you're just...
Yeah, we're just upgrading it.
It's my understanding you're just doing this because Missouri Housing Development Commission will not issue tax credits if it's not in line with the comprehensive plan.
That is my understanding.
I mean, it's essentially what you're doing. You're not changing, you're just upgrading, you're not...
Yeah, we're not changing the...
We're just changing the designation.
Commission will not issue tax credits if it's not in line with the comprehensive plan.
That is my understanding.
I mean, it's essentially what you're doing. You're not changing, you're just upgrading, you're not...
Yeah, we're not changing this...
We're just changing the designation from a business park to what it really is, essentially.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there people in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this? Bring it back up here for any comments on the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We had a committee that looked at the comprehensive plan, and one of the things that we tried to do was match the actual use to the comprehensive plan, and as you recall from the presentation, we were trying to merge the master plans into the comprehensive plan, and this certainly does fall right into what we are attempting to do with the comp plan.
Any other comments? Close the public rec, the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation that we improve CPA M-10-09-2389 to re-guide lots 1, 2, and 3 for business park, high-density residential for Friendship Manor.
Second.
Motion, several seconds. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hennig?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Franklin?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye. Okay, it has been approved. Okay, we have, let's see, another business, I have a question, on December 28th, does everyone plan to be here that week after Christmas? Will you be here for our meeting on the 28th? As far as everyone knows, you won't be?
Two, seven, eight.
Okay. Everyone else, sorry. I think we have all but a couple of them planning to be here. All right. Any other items this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, other than, again, with the 28th, if you know, as soon as possible, if you do know that you will not be present, just let Karen know, and we'll keep a running tally. We need at least six people for a quorum. We may actually have an application or two come in. Our deadline for that, for that meeting, application deadline is next Friday, the 4th, so if you know before the end of next week, please let Karen know. Sounds like you know, a few of you already know for sure. If Karen's kind of making a note of that, we'll make sure we have enough people in attendance really just to identify a quorum for the 20th, since we will have a few applications, we